Let me ignore it, please. Approval of minutes. So, second. Okay, any comments, corrections? Seeing on all in favor, please raise your hands. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Before we get to a minister's report, I'm gonna jump a bit, so I'm gonna jump to Mark's subcommittee. Briefly.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Lee.
No, I'm good. Kinda.
Keep moving away.
No, no, it's okay, go away.
No, I'm not moving, it's just like a sound barrier.
Thanks, Lee, for taking me out of order, just briefly, um, on this, on the central office, um, dealing with the superintendent's search update. Tracy Novick is here, from the Massachusetts School Association, that MSC that we contracted with and to work with, and she reported out our subcommittee this evening, and I'd like, she was kind enough to stay longer to report out as well to the full committee, to regards to the focus groups and what the information gleaned, as well as the superintendent profile that was able, that, that was the charge. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Tracy, over from there.
Thank you. Um, thanks for having me back. Um, I did write this up, and I know that you'll already have seen the written version of that. Um, we had two public meetings, one in Mary, one in Wrentry. Um, we also did a survey that was out online for about three weeks, which would be 366 responses to. Majority of those were from parents, although we had the representation amongst students, um, other members of the community, um, and staff and teachers, as well as some alums. I met with both your elementary school teachers, as well as high school teachers, um, met with several different groups from this building, from central administration, have principals, uh, with the secretaries, and met with your student council at the middle school and your student government at high school. Um, I do wanna say a couple of things. First of all, couldn't have done all of that, and particularly not in the amount of time that I had, if it weren't for Jessica, so you know that you are well-served, but I want you to know that, um, we can't do our job without, um, good district support, and certainly you had it here. Um, also, your students in particular are fantastic, um, and I really enjoyed meeting them. Um, they took this very, very seriously. I, um, charged them representing all students, and said that in particular, they need to be thoughtful of the fact that I wasn't meeting with anyone in elementary school, um, and they were very thankful for that. Um, I wanted to get seriously what we're really thoughtful about, making sure that they were representative. I started, in all of these, by asking them, um, for what were strengths of the district, what was the district, um, what were really things that they thought were valuable about the district, um, and I wanted to share some of that with you, because I knew that sometimes it's useful to hear that from someone outside the district. Um, and these are things that were commonalities among all of the different groups that I've met with and the people that we heard about. Quavon's reputation extends far outside of Quavon, and something that, um, is very, I've heard very commonly, um, from students, from teachers, from parents, uh, from people, from central administration, is the number of people who choose to be part of Quavon Regional. When you talk about school choice, in this case, you're talking about kids who are coming here from other districts, but you actually have a large amount of school choice that lives here. Um, they have chosen to be here, they've chosen to work here, they've chosen to go to school here. That's really valuable, and the towns, um, certainly appreciate the value that the re- that the regional school district gives to them. Uh, the variety of programs that are available to students is something that was mentioned in a number of different contexts, as well as the innovative work of the district, the district moving forward and not being too much rural. People, um, in different levels who work for the district feel valued as professionals and feel trusted. They feel that they are, um, they are given work to do, but are trusted to do it. Students feel supported, um, teachers still feel supported and feeling that they work and, and, uh, learn in frugal environments. And across the board, there also is a lot of mention of facilities, um, of that being an ongoing concern of the district, and also of weekends being something that was really a high priority. I also heard in more than one context, the idea that people and not numbers were important, and that isn't just in terms of staff talking about it in terms of budget, what else, there's students talking about it in terms of test data. So, that is necessarily common everywhere, so that's important to be mindful. If you ask any group of people involved in the region what their biggest challenges, they'll tell you it's the budget, that includes the students, um, and then that leads into a number of other challenges, um, people saw, in terms of the ongoing balance of being able to maintain different district operations, um, and how those district operations, um, are continually funded and sustained, uh, the ongoing tension around vocational education and school choice, um, the staffing issues at the elementary and high school, in terms of staffs being stacked, workload and staff being able to maintain things. The ongoing coordination and cooperation across the district in one of the towns is obviously a full-time job for leadership here, and was seen as one of the challenges of the district, and also the growing socioeconomic diversity of the district, as well as the old school capital, we mentioned, um, among different groups. And those really informed what, um, the discussion was around the next leader for Quavon, what was needed there. Because the budget was looming as a, this challenge clearly, um, physical management and, um, budgeting are something that needs to be a strength of, of an incoming leader for Quavon. Being excellent at that sort of coordination, collaboration, communication, because of the needs of that in terms of the various towns that, um, Quavon represents, being prepared not only to advocate locally, but also advocate at the state level, being familiar with regional systems and the specifics of regional finance, so budgeting again, but specifically in terms of the region, and then, uh, feeding into some of the other conversations that I know you're having, experience and ability in terms of coordination, um, with other districts around services and cooperation and collaboration. Commitment to equity, uh, to long-term investment, to fairness, and, um, practice in financial management. The budget very naturally led to communication, but there were other areas in which that came up. The need to communicate to the districts around what the schools are currently doing, um, and have done in the past, being able to communicate to the districts around changes in choices, students, around how the district works, and faculty and staff are in the coordinate work of the district. And, uh, in terms of communication, communication adds it to the street, so listening as well as speaking, um, and making sure that, um, any, any planning that happens in the district is done within coordination with those, um, who are part of the district. Visibility was something that came up. I know that one of the conversations that always comes up during superintendent searches is, um, in district versus out of district living, that was less of a concern in terms of, um, those that spoke up, more was a concern about someone who actually was around. Someone who tends to games, who comes to meetings, who's visible in the schools, um, who's visible in that town. Someone who has a real commitment to Quavon Regional, and doesn't see the district as a stepping stone, um, specifically doesn't see it as a stepping stone from somewhere east, and, uh, someone who either knows or is willing to learn the towns, the region, the culture, um, the politics, and so forth. And I do want to stress that it wasn't necessarily that somebody needs to innately have that knowledge, but to understand and value that knowledge as part of the job. The way that it was put more than once was that the person needs to be able to tell Quavon Regional's story, and to tell it in the district and tell it outside the district. District stakeholders want something that puts kids first. When I asked the students for their priorities on district leadership, they did it individually and then shared them out without talking to each other. The two that came up most frequently, far and away, were kind and caring. I thought that was important for you to know. Adults also wanna see someone who values young people, um, and sees that as their priority. Someone who doesn't just do the job, but is passionate about it, and, um, throwing back to that notion of trusting professionals, having that balance of, um, not micromanaging, but ultimately taking responsibility. So, the buck stops here, but people are able to do their jobs. That, by the way, was something that was valued as a current strength of the district. There was a clear communication that, um, you're not looking for someone who's on the side of education. There has been a trend recently of superintendents coming in from other places, um, not just from teachers, because that's very common, teachers, but also from other, um, areas of the region. I've heard more than once, people are looking for someone who has experience in education, who's available, like, um, to be part of education. Uh, in terms of areas of concern, in terms of knowledge base, special education, law, policy, and ethics, and, um, leading into that, the changing national standards, and thus the changing state standards, so the state is changing its accountability system because of the new federal education law, um, and while all of us are still learning what that means, making sure that, that somebody is keeping up with those kinds of things. The, um, changing socioeconomic of the district leads again to someone who is learning or knowledgeable what kinds of impacts that has on a district and what kinds of services that may mean. Um, and one of the things that I thought interesting when we said more than once, certainly said with those who are most closely central administration, we said more than once, was that new superintendent's gotta be Dr. Marshall. Um, and that, that was something that people then sort of saw as being part of the, the question of leadership, was that any leader is going to be somebody different. And that this was a chance for the district to, um, really take stock of itself before moving forward in leadership, um, and that the sort of innovation and transformation that the district has had over the years is something that the district should continue to be willing to build on and able to build on. That any changes that are made should be done, um, not for the sake of change, but because it's in the best interest of the district, and, uh, one thing that came up more than, more than once was that this was an opportunity for new eyes and for new relationships, um, and that the strengths of the districts were something that were a foundation that then could be built on moving forward. And in particular, the, there was a, um, question for leadership that builds on, but is it tied to the past and moves on from there? And that's my response.
So, I know Mark will report on it, uh, once we, his subcommittee did, because we all met for an hour anyway, but if anybody has some specific questions for Tracy, because she was nice enough to say she would stay for this part of the full committee meeting, um, you know, feel free to, free to ask.
One quick question. Uh, May, can you give us a rundown of the percentage of the responses that you received?
Sure. Um, I can do it by town, and then I didn't break down the full breakdown on the, uh, the divisions of stakeholders, but in terms of the response for the survey, um, thirty-two percent of the responses were from Mary, twelve percent were from Hardwick, twenty-two percent were from Hubbardston, five point five percent were from Wrentry, eleven percent were from Ocam.
That's, that's almost, that's almost a perfect.
Yes, it might, yeah. My sense is they're not as strong as yours, but that, I, I was pleased to say that. Uh, sixteen percent, obviously, since the map doesn't have there, sixteen percent were from outside the district, and the outside the district were, uh, some school choice parents, were some staff, um, and at least in a couple of cases, were from alums, because I did, one thing I did do was I said, including to the students, if you have friends who are recent graduates, could you please let them know that we had the survey out there, and that seems to mark us on the number spike the next day? The majority of those responding were parents, although it's a, it's sixty-one percent. And then it was breaking down, and this is in order, I don't have the percentages, teachers and staff, then students, then the community, then alums, and then the municipality, um, all of those multiples of people. There was none of those categories for a single official.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Thanks very much for staying.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you've done, and how you've followed after meetings.
Great, you're very good. I'm getting it.
Yep, you too.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Superintendent Schools.
I will do my best to do this, um, just to let all of you know, I'm not, like, any longer infectious, so I apologize for the coughing. Just a couple items, um, just to let you know that, um, Tuesday, um, Sheila and I said, because I was gonna cough through the lunch, and attended scholars' brunching, put on by the Mass Association of School Superintendent's to honor scholars across the Commonwealth, and Celine Haber from our school was our, um, candidate, and the person who, um, we both had lunch, and then we said, oh, somebody who has a great, um, a great field of potential and has done wonderful in education, and we know Michael Far, but he did have a presentation for the college scholarship. In addition to that, congratulations to the music department on their work on, on, on Sunday, where they had a one-night concert, which is a dreamy sort of night, and they were brave to take on that weekend, where it was snowing and galling through, through the hall. High school scheduling, I assume within the next couple of weeks, we've been, uh, we've been doing our work on high school scheduling, that is huge, huge undertaking, especially with our scheduling at the high school, which is a tri- national schedule, which is challenging. That will give us the information that we need, particularly from student demand, where our staffing pattern will shift, where we have more students who are interested in the arts or fewer students in the arts, and thus you'll be able to see, uh, as we begin to work on budget, that our staffing pattern will shift. It doesn't mean necessarily we'll have fewer people on the staff, and we need different flavors of how many, uh, artists versus how many science awards or whatever, but so that work will begin. One thing that I will be asking the Hubbardston representatives to meet with myself and also with Principal Pearson regarding, um, the Hubbardston and whether they want to share cer- share some space at the school. I know that the, um, interim administrator, I guess town administrator, that was you, um, Principal Pearson, and we had some conversations. Obviously, you would love to keep the CAPS collaborative program in our schools. The revenue that it produces is not huge, it's about a hundred and three, five thousand dollars, but the, with what it offers to our school and what our school offers to those children is pretty significant. So, I'd like the opportunity to set up some very brief meeting where, you know, late after or something, we can just get together with, with Jill, and we can talk about our positioning on that. I know Jill, that you have some other ideas about shifting around space utilization patterns, which may allow the town to use some space with us, continuing to keep the CAPS collaborative program in-house. I'd like to talk with you about that, um, making sure all the same agent, that we understand that in order to do that, to shift space and to use some space differently, that it changes the complexion of our school a little bit. And we don't know if that's going to be acceptable, um, to, um, miss this place, but we'd like to have that conversation and, and, and get a decision, uh, probably by the end of the month or early January at least, because CAPS collaborative will have to make decisions about moving some programs, and maybe they've been reading the papers about what's happening in Pittsburgh and having some, some, some water problems, shall we say? There are instances of schools that they never thought they would be into, they're banging the furniture, and I don't know, we, we may be able to help them out a little bit, um, but they, you know, we usually have, a lot of our CAPS collaborative programs are housed in some of those Pittsburgh schools. Obviously, they're ma- having to move to, I think they, um, a old Catholic school.
And Lunenburg, and TC Passios, and San Anthony's, and Pittsburgh, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're kinda spread around in different spots, so what CAPS used to be able to do is depend on Pittsburgh for a while, because they usually had some space available, but in this case, this year, they have a little asbestos problem as a result of some water damage, which, um, I feel this pain.
Yep.
And, um, so those are, those are the kind of critical things that I, I, as far as Hubbardston and space utilization and the CAPS agenda, what we'd like to see happen to that. So, uh, Jill and I will give you some dates somewhere in the afternoon, maybe we could all get together, walk around the building, and hear some ideas that, that, um, and, and you know what, might be helpful, if some of you haven't seen the program in operation, I mean, some of you may not have had that opportunity, you may wanna do that, because you'll say, how do they take up that much space? Uh, because it doesn't, you say, gee, there's not that many students, but I think when you see the operation, you can truly understand the significance of the work that's done in that program. So, I will be in touch with you regarding some meetings, because by February, I'd like to have a decision, so that we're either saying to the town, here's some space, how will we modify it, or it's gonna stay the same, and Hubbardston's not gonna utilize the shared space at this time, but we can work together on that. That's all, I have Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Assistant Assistant.
I just have one item, Mr. Chairman, as, um, as you may know from Jessica's email earlier today, we are having a, um, a review, the Department of Education is coming in next week to conduct a targeted district review. Uh, this is a, a standard procedure that they do every five or six years in every school district across the state, so it happens that this is our year. If you were on the committee six years ago, you've probably participated in some way in, um, in this, um, event.
That's a good word for it.
I was thinking, that's exactly what I was thinking.
We've been preparing, we've been very busy preparing for this event for the last several weeks, and, and central office, it has taken a great deal of our time, because although, although, you know, they're here for three days, what they've asked us to do is a pretty thorough self-assessment, and they asked us to, um, submit supporting documents that support our, our internal, you know, a self-assessment process, so, uh, we each have been working, spent many hours, writing narratives and trying to help them understand our district as fully as they can before they arrive, and that's their intention, so they're actually working, um, involved in the, uh, today, they were there today and yesterday, to review all of those documents and get an understanding of our district from looking at our data, from looking at our self-assessment documents, and all of the things that we submitted, I think we uploaded over three hundred and fifty documents to the portal, and wrote a sixty-five page self-assessment document to submit to them. So, um, they'll take all of that information, and they'll come and visit us for three days next week, um, they'll use that information to develop some questions, um, some areas that they want, want to investigate further, as you can see from, I have, um, Jessica sent these to you by email, but, um, you have in your, in your packet a, just an outline, this is their protocol, this is what they will do when they were here, explains the entire process. The last two pages of that document, I just stapled the, um, the bios of the, the folks who will be visiting the district, so there are six individuals, uh, who have extensive experience in public education, and those will be our six team members, and, um, the other document that you have is the schedule, uh, and it pretty much outlines who they will see. I've worked closely with the, um, lead, the liaison, who is Pat Williams, um, developing the schedule and making sure that the schedule meets their needs, um, and that was finalized yesterday. You can see on the, um, Thursday, the seventeenth, they have left five time slots for possible school committee interviews. They would like to use only three of those five time slots, but they wanted to, um, open up as many slots to try to get as many committee members to meet with them as possible, so those will be small group meetings, they're either at, the slots are three fifteen to four fifteen, four fifteen to five fifteen, or five fifteen to six fifteen, on Thursday, the, um, January eighteenth. And those, um, meetings will be counted in this building, either in this, we're going to split this room, um, either in this room or the superintendent's conference room. So, if you are available and would like to participate in those interviews, please let Jess know, she's going to, um, what, which, um, times are most convenient for her to work on, that'll be in the schedule and considering, you know, that there is not a public need, so she's gonna watch the form, um, whatever, and those sorts of things, so, um, and, um, then, they will go after their visit, they'll be in classrooms as well, in all schools, um, and in randomly selected classrooms, they, um, just meet with the principal and say, give us a map of the school, tell us which, um, classrooms have substitute teachers in them, because they won't go into those classrooms, but, and then they have a very specific, um, outline of what they're looking for class, for in classrooms, all of that information has been shared with our teachers, so they, they are familiar with what the classroom, um, observations would be. That data will all be aggregated, there'll be no identification of teachers, they don't even ask for teachers' names, it's all very much trying to get a big picture and develop trends about what's happening in classrooms, what's happening in our curriculum, our instruction, and, and our support services for students. And then, about three to four months after they're here, I think it was closer to six months last time they were here, we receive, um, a report from them that, um, we will, as, as with any audit, we'll have a chance to look at it and offer corrections if there are factual, any inaccurate factual information, and then eventually that becomes a public document. And it will offer, it will highlight things that we were doing well, and as I said, um, in the email, it will also identify some areas where there's opportunities for growth and, and make suggestions of things we might want to consider doing. There isn't any required, um, corrective action, like there is in some of the special education audits that we, that we, um, go through, it's really, um, suggestions that they offer to us, and we, we consider whether, you know, those are things that we want to move forward on or, or not.
Questions, anybody?
This is the old days when we had the Office of Accountability, and they went out into the districts.
It is a spin-off, yes.
And now, um, I did hear something that it's a kindler, gentler, and a better process compared to what it was years ago, depending on who was running the seat, that's what I heard, and they're doing, they, meaning Department of Ed, every year, they dipstick both rural, suburban, and, um, urban education in various degrees, and it's our time in this area?
Yeah, that's just, that's just our time.
Thank you.
I'm very skeptical of this sort of thing, this will not come as news to anybody. Did we learn anything, a single thing, on the last one, five or six years ago, that helped further our educational endeavor?
Oh, I would say, what we had the opportunity to do is to validate, have an external-
Confirm that we're on the right track.
Yes, to, to un-
Of course, we know that.
Well, I, I know that it's easy, especially internally, to say, well, of course we know that, but that external validation of, of, of other professionals and organizations who go to a lot of different schools, looking at the same standards and comparing them to different school districts, there's no question that the opportunity to have dialogue with them about what they see, we are probably harder on our self-evaluation, because they get calling up, saying, God, you people are into this, and it, and because we, we approached it, and we said, you know what, we should say not well, because we just feel there's growth in this area, and we knew, and, and that we really wanted them to target a particular area of student achievement and so forth, we didn't want them to, because we could've, you know, looked great on some of the basic, you know, what, of all policy development, how the school committee and the, you know, the organization get along, and those kinds of things, so they're not even really gonna spend a lot of time on that, they're really focused on areas where we're really putting a lot of time and energy and where the work of our teachers-
Curriculum and assessment?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And so, we would, we would, we're, we're looking forward to the opportunity to see what, you know, hear what they see, hear about what they see, um, suggestions that they might have about where we could improve or how we could improve, I mean, we think we're on the right track, and I think it does help, it helps our teachers hear about their work, um, it helps our teachers who've put in so much work and so much time and so many initiatives, it helps them to, uh, feel appreciated, and, um, so while the, while, believe me, um, the twenty-second of December, when we were working, because we were, we had to get everything in by then, I had nothing but to say. But, and, as you, as you look back, and you understand what they're trying to accomplish, and what this will bring us, it's good information, we, they will validate some of our good practices, they will criticize some of the things where we know we need to grow, but maybe even give us, give us some suggestions about how we can be better. And I was listening to Paul Revel, who's the, who was talking about public education, and the difficulties that our towns have, even if Massachusetts has potentially some of the best public schools in, in the United States. But what we still don't have, because of the achievement gap, and the achievement gap for children of color is bad, but the achievement gap for kids with lower socioeconomic status is even worse. And they talked about that regardless of what we do with intervention programming, we aren't strong enough there yet to compensate for the poverty of the children we're trying to serve. And it was really, I was really useful to hear him say, if we could only have people understand, you know, when the governor, and we talked about the governor being very anti, um, bringing childhood education, and saying, no, we just need to fix what we've got. No, we need to fix the situation in which kids of poverty find themselves. Weston's not having trouble, people. Brookline's not having trouble. But as our communities have changed in their demographic, we have seen new challenges, new socioeconomic challenges, as well as new, uh, challenges in social emotional growth for our students, and kids, kids coming to school in tatters. First day of school used to be a special day, now we say, they don't even clean.
First day of school used to be a special day, now we say, "They don't even clean." And so, we know, we know our work is hard, but the work of parents who are out there without the support that they need is even harder. So, when he talked about that achievement gap between the poorest, and we have some really poor parts of our communities, that even with our intervention programs, I mean, I know that, you know, certainly Deli can tell me, and certainly, probably Julie and Sensen can tell me, Jill can tell me, that we just don't have a strong enough program to lift people out of the poverty that they live in. And we've got to get better on that. And I believe that, you know, this external validation is helpful, and it gives us the opportunity to say some things like that to those people who go back to Desi and say, "Hey, the people out there do get poverty, they do understand." And I know, I think it's March ninth, I believe, the summit again will be at-
Yes.
At Clark.
Clark.
So, that's another, I mean, it's a little bit of a jump off, but until such times we really figure out a way to get kids fed and get them to school and out of very bad situations with support, you know, we'll be running the green light.
Maybe if they didn't spend money doing stuff like this and having a bureaucracy that did stuff like this and they took money and-
Well, they have such accountability mandates from feds that they have to have a process. So, I understand their pain.
Yeah, but we should be careful about what we say, because one of the documents they want is the web address of the school committee meeting video, so if we're too critical here, they will be reviewing it.
I wouldn't say anything here to you that I wouldn't say to them.
But, I mean, we just have in our subcommittee meeting about, okay, we've been asking parents to get involved in all these things and the numbers were a little less than we might like, and now there's another thing where we're going to ask parents to come in and talk about, you know, it's a little overkill.
And we all forget that many, or most of our parents work, and, you know, trying to be part of this school day is a challenge for them, it just is.
All righty, who else?
I'd like to thank Sheila and her leadership, and she's put a ton of work into getting everything ready and meeting with all the stakeholder groups, so that we all know what's expected of us, what will happen to us in those next three days, and we have been very nice not to blame her, first of all.
All my members I was just going to thank. All right, moving on to Director of Administrative Services.
Since our last meeting, which I think was in November, the warrant subcommittee has approved payroll warrants eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen point one, and accounts pay of warrants during eleven A, eleven B, and we now have a warrant they were calling eleven V. We have to label them differently because of the way in which the payments are made. An A warrant, a check is in the mail, a B warrant is a wire, but we now have vending machines in our little high school cafeteria that take debit cards, and so we have to pay that bill by an ACH, so it's a V for vending. The way in which the treasurer has to fund the warrant is why we have the differentiation. So, eleven A, eleven B, eleven V, twelve A, thirteen A, B, and V, and fourteen A and B. I did neglect to bring them in, because that's why I'll get them later on in the meeting, bring them in. I do have an update on OPEP. We're moving forward in establishing our OPEP trust fund. The treasurer, Ron Christensen, and I met with PARs, which stands for Public Agency Retirement Services, they're the consultant that we're going to use, they have an established OPEP trust fund that we can become part of. Jess has three of these presentations that we saw the other day, along with, I think it's printed out in your packet. Also in your packet is the vote, this is what's great about going with an established group, they've had this vote vetted by their attorneys, this is the vote that we would need to take to establish the trust fund, so we met her on Monday, Tuesday, we met her on Tuesday, and she was able to give this to me in time for you to have it tonight, so what I'd like you to do is read it over. She did offer to come to our February meeting where I would like to have the vote taken to formally establish the trust. She does live in Dover, but she asked several times, she said many times she would come out. So, if you have any questions or you would like her to come up to that meeting, if you could just send an email to Jess, if there's not enough interest, and I'll tell her she can stay home for the night. Yes, Dr. Allen?
Is this where we have a dollar in there?
No, we have nothing in there, because we haven't formally established the fund. We have ten thousand dollars coming from the budget, there's a dollar bill on my desk, Dr. Allen's contribution.
Doctor Allen.
So, yeah, this is that fund. I do want to make a correction, she got back to me late today, on the backside, we're having the school committee signature live, they, she went and made sure with their attorneys that the chair could sign, so once the vote is taken, I'd ask Jess to take a vote by roll call vote, have that certified, the vote certified, and then just the chairman would actually sign this document, and then we will be able to move forward. The law was written so that once you establish the fund, you have to wait ninety days before you put any money in it, even the dollar. So, we're going to get this started so we can make that contribution from this year's budget. So, if you could just read that and be ready for February, that would be great.
So, the plan is, either way, whether she shows up or not, we plan a vote on this request?
Yeah, so if you, if you would like her to, you have any questions regarding, review the PowerPoint that's in your packet and the vote, if you have any questions or you would like her to come and to answer questions, she will be here on February, and yes, we'd like to take this host to the, in that ninety days.
But we don't need her here, is what I'm saying, so, I mean, if there's a good reason to have to drive all that way, that's fine, but if not, especially at the time of year. And so, then the other question, so, once I sign this, I have to wait ninety days to get Dick's dollar?
You don't get Dick's dollar. Now, you signed this, the vote was taken, the treasurer has control of it, by law, Ron Christensen, as the treasurer, has control of the OPEP trust fund.
Clarify that.
Yes, you don't get a dollar.
Teacher advisory, Greg want to say anything, or?
Heaven's under the weather, and he just sent his regards.
As long as that's all he's sent. No, I didn't know anything today, I see. Okay, subcommittee reports, admin?
I don't think it's this time.
Okay, audit.
We're all set.
Budget.
Budget, we haven't had a meeting, obviously, but we should be moving into that period where cost center managers are taking a hard look about what their legitimate needs are for the coming years.
We have, we've got public needs, budget has been pretty much submitted, you know, the chair, who I was actually, where we're putting everything in, every time I see her, she says, "Well, it's up one point per cent." And we assume, Mark, obviously, from previous conversations, that we will drive a budget down to some reasonable percentage, we'll talk about, you know, some of the things that people thought could be necessary and would be appropriate to add to our budget, but basically, we will do as we did last year, not go up a carry with a budget that hits a fifteen or sixteen percent increase, even though we know we need some of that stuff, and follow the, sort of the process that we did last year, which is a little different than we've done in years previous to that.
Right, that'd be good, because obviously, the towns, you know, I was at a meeting last night where some members of the select board had talked about, you know, the towns obviously needing some kind of guidance as to where we're headed with sixty-two or sixty-one or sixty-three percent, whatever we're going to take out of the resources. So, they need some, obviously, some guidance, yeah.
I'd like you to set a meeting, look-
Set a meeting?
Yeah, for this month, yes.
For this month?
Yep. Last year, we started on the twenty-sixth, and in order to get the work we need to get done for that public meeting, I'd like to have a meeting before the end of the month, and please, not on, not on, on January thirty.
Not on January thirty.
My husband and my son's birthday, so not on that date.
So, I'll work with Jess on that, we'll talk with her someday.
All right, Central Office?
Just a couple pieces, and the first item on the agenda was dealing with the financial plan, Plan for Success, I'd like to just give a quick little highlight, ask for me to highlight anything else, because it's a multi-perspective on this, but on December thirteenth, several school committee members were invited to the initial kickoff of Plan for Success with our consultant, along with the district's administrative team, to start the kickoff and to roll it out in regards to, although we have a financial plan, we had one in place from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and sixteen, we then agreed that we would wait last year, go through some of the information that we're getting from the Collins Center, I'm trying to quickly update us, and I, in September, said we would go as quickly as possible to do this. Our consultant I wanted to work with, the Department of Education, and the perspective of this was Plan for Success was not only dealing with the accountability perspectives, but with the Department of Education, but it holds us accountable for the work that we do as school committee, as well as the districts, three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, as they go forward of educating kids. So, I came up with one's first name, Lori Likas? Lori Likas, the facilitator, started, I'm going to ask for me to kind of highlight, but if you remember, it's really to really build upon our vision, our mission, theory of action, put our plan together, and then evaluate and hold us accountable on a one, three, and a five, the account perspective. Am I highlighting that correctly?
And I think that what the process allows us to do is to merge easily into all of the state reporting we need to do, because we have a strategic plan, but it's really separate from the state, from, for example, putting together a district improvement plan. When you do the Plan for Success, it lends itself to exactly what the state wants you to do, sort of in lockstep, which allows principals so much more direction than just sort of saying, "Well, this is a strategic plan, how do you come up with, you know, a school plan?" Or you look at the district plan, then the school plan, so then individual professional development planning, and this will, will take a lot of the mystery and so forth out of that, and allow us to, I think, be a much more, shall we say, carefully planned, this is with active planning that makes more sense to people over time. We have, still working with Lori, there's different facets of-
Right.
-work that she's going to do, not only with committee members, but with students and with teachers and different kind of planning group. She will continue to work with the, obviously, the administrative leadership team on four levels, on the day she comes to the district. And what we're trying to do is because we have the audit situation, we have a big security and safety planning program that's ongoing with our police and member towns, and so we're, we're trying to find, she wants about seven or eight more days, and that's just a lot to put on the laps of our, especially once we get into March and we're starting the testing. So, we're trying to work around, to try to come up with a schedule that would be amenable to those of us who need to participate in this process. It's a worthy process, it's one that will bring us to exactly where we need to be, as we have a new district at the end of the school year, we'll have a new Plan for Success, strategic plan, new safety and security plan, a lot of our policies, you know, updated, you can see that later in the agenda, we'll continue to work on some of those. So, we'll have things in place that we've been working really hard on, we have all of our contracts in place, this is the first year, three years, so we have a lot of, you know, big stuff that will be in place. So, we're excited about the fact that we're working on this Plan for Success, and what we'd like to do is write and get it done, but this process, and while probably, Mark, you and I could sit down and write it, it's not real then.
Has to be followed by community, has to be listened to-
Exactly.
And with all stakeholders, including teachers, parents, school committee members-
Exactly.
And community members.
Yeah, and understanding what the focus of the state is, is, you know, we're going to have a commissioner, which could change the reflection of some things that are happening or not happening now. I don't want to guess what's happening in Washington. That has to just be something special happening there. Yeah, so, I don't know where some of the, we're worried about risk from that, and we're worried about where some of the, that those monies would be directed, and how would we be directed, that's very scary for all.
So, continue to keep the community advised, you'll be working through, you'll be involved at the various stages as well. As we have said, we have a goal in place, and we'll be moving to that, to have Plan for Success and the strategic plan in place by the spring, that was our goal, and we will, we will achieve it, we will achieve that.
Do you have a meeting date for the next meeting?
Has it been scheduled?
We don't yet.
It was December, December-
December thirteenth.
Thirteenth, one was at first, and then it was the holidays, so that we know-
And then we have that week, you know, next week, which is our accountability audit.
The audit. And then the other is the updated search, the superintendent's search. Thank you for letting me take it out of order in regards to Tracy reporting out, you do have it replaced, the report that she was pointing together. I will also have a million pieces as well to give to Jess, that will have all the raw data, the survey pieces, and everything else as part of it, but the subcommittee, I just wanted to highlight a few of the points that she mentioned, but for us to hear, you know, the next superintendent from the profile of, from the community piece, aside from knowing budget piece, curriculum piece, being able to work with other districts, looking at fiscal management, the ability of communication, how to deal with parental concerns, dealing with staff and faculty, skilled reflective listener, a district presence, a commitment to long-term to the district. Please, I don't mean to echo a forty-year commitment, but the commitment of a district that she mentioned, somebody not looking for a stepping stone for two, two years and up they go. So, it's good that somebody's looking for, people want experience.
Mark, I left twice and came back.
I know. I'm being diplomatic and fair and, experience in education was clear, dealing with the new accountability system, somebody that has an awareness and understanding of this. So, here we have people that need to know where we're going in the next steps, not just that, but curriculum, what we're being assessed at, what we've asked our teachers to adapt and be retrained and to do. Yes, I know two and two is four, and we know we can articulate it in different ways, but the different curriculums and approaches and ways of facilitating learning, not just one way, it's many ways. So, somebody has to be alert and understand that and be able to, I think, motivate, lead, and help the district to follow, that's what the issue is about. And of course, varian, I already said, different levels of accountability, understanding special education, policy, the ethics piece, kids, understanding kids, liking kids, caring about kids. I think you got the picture of the gist of what was, the community looked at about some of the leadership. I'm glad that there was a huge survey response, over three hundred responses, maybe the forums wasn't as intended as I would like to see, but hey, we tend to give the message out, the paper's been wonderful, the community's been wonderful, and people are aware that they had opportunities to be involved. The subcommittee also, you know, again, when you look at our contract with MSSC, what we asked for, for the initial meeting, we asked, and we were spending a thousand dollars, which to me was extremely reasonable for a professional organization, and even though we do have our membership dues, and they can consult along the way, districts, the zero, zero, zero costs, part of your benefits of membership, but we asked to go a little deeper with that profile and do that piece. The next piece, what we asked, what I call it, one A, one A was to say that MSSC and others, and even the subcommittee, if the school, if the full committee lends itself, that we can then do part two of what we contracted out in a way, would be to put this profile together and see, and ask if there are, and look to see if there are internal candidates that fit this profile, and to have a look at that, they'll help us on this. And I'm envisioning is the subcommittee to be part of this, the chair, I would expect MSSC, possibly even the leadership of MSSC, Glenn Cucho could be involved, and also, I was asking, hopefully, even thinking, the Massachusetts School Superintendent Association. So, we ourselves have that profile, we offered to see anybody inside that wants to apply and be able to put some screening questions together to see if we want to vote, do we have internal candidates for that. So, that would be the one A piece that we kind of outlined before we got and said, "Okay, do we want to go to a full-blown search, do that?" We've done our profile piece, move as quickly as possible on that. Second, the piece of contract was, the association will work with the committee or a subcommittee to screen, to create screening questions for any internal candidates that the committee wishes to screen. The association will staff and assist in such screening. To me, I think that's the next logical step as we're going, as we talk. So, the subcommittee voted to support to go to one A, to do that piece, and to bring that to the full committee. So, turn it over to the chair for that, to ask any questions, maybe they can make a motion to see if we can move to the one A piece in regards to the screening of any internal candidates that are interested in being the next superintendent for having a regional school.
Before I say anything, did you get any questions?
Yeah, I move we accept the report from the subcommittee.
Second?
Second?
Okay. All right, so what you're saying, okay, so let me understand what you're saying, I understand most of it, but so, do you want a motion? You want the full committee to vote on a motion that you will proceed in one A, essentially looking for an internal candidate as the next step?
Correct, which meets the profile that we asked-
That's the intent of my motion.
Right, no, I understand, I just want to make sure I understand it.
What, what do you look at for the timeframe of the, of that one A being completed?
I would hope that the next-
I would hope that the next thirty to forty-five days. I would hope, I mean, I would have to rely on you to help on the connections. MSC, I have to work with Tracy, with Jessica and that, but I would think extremely, and as quickly as possible, because we mentioned, if we were going to not go that route, and nobody made that profile and wanted to be the superintendent of schools, internal candidates, we'd wanna do this by March to go forward, if we had to go further.
But if you, even if you do, like, mid-February, you know, this keeps, I mean, it's moving along, but because if you do have to go out, or how would you really wanna get out there in February?
Thirty days, I'll try to keep a record on that.
I'm just concerned we're running out, we don't have a lot of time left, and, and, so it's just.
But also look, which is nice, when you look at the profile, have the external validation, a professional organization do this in a way, so I'm hoping that we do have candidates inside, and we probably do, that are interested in being superintendent of schools.
And the other point is that Tracy is still under, under our current contract, she is still part of this process, the 1A process, in my respect there.
Yes.
So, we don't have to do anything, but she will help us there.
Yes.
Okay, Debbie?
I'm concerned about the time, but I'm also concerned that since we asked for so much public involvement, that they're gonna say, "Oh, they had somebody in mind anyway, and they just gave it to them." And I don't know that the public perception of our search will be as welcomed, which may pose problems down the road. So, I'm wondering why, since we have all this information, and, I mean, I'd love to have an internal candidate if that's what we choose, but why can't we just do a full search, and is it the money issue, or, I'm just thinking with time being of the essence?
And Mark, you could, you could discuss this too, but my, pardon my sitting here, but, I mean, once again, the whole process goes to, I think, to look at, let's get to a point and see, if we have an internal candidate, let's go with that first. I mean, that's been out there, so I don't, I mean, I understand what you're saying, public perception, but I don't think the school committee should be driven by, I mean, we're going for the process, and I think we should stick with our process, if that's the case, even if there might, there are gonna be some people that don't like whatever we do.
I just think an internal candidate's gonna apply just as an external candidate, and why not just?
Well, that gets, so I guess the second thing, and that was part of the discussion too, is that if you go all full-blown, Tracy had said that, people will call and say, "Oh, do you have an internal candidate?" And if the answer's yes, they won't apply. And from, that's from her experience, I mean.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, anybody else can chime in, I sat there, I'm not a subcommittee, but that's what I heard, and she made a big point of that.
Correct, and also, I honestly believe we have continuously been open, we've put information out, we had over three hundred responses, and just because the public session wasn't as a hundred, two hundred people, I'm not worried about that. I'm glad that we have given a lot of time, we have involved not only the call-in center, we have also done previously the planning, or the planning, what's that?
The supplemental.
The regional, the regional planning and all that piece. We have given ample opportunities for folks, so I feel extremely comfortable going forward on the 1A piece at this time.
Yeah, I just, you know, in summary that was presented to us, I mean, I saw, you know, several lines in here that led one to believe that the people that were surveyed felt rather comfortable with someone who had knowledge, you know, an intensive knowledge of the district, rather than the whole, you know, the stepping stone type process. I know it's not a guarantee that if someone internal should surface that was acceptable, will wind up staying forever, but, you know, this churning every few years becomes very tedious with everybody involved.
And once again, just because you had an internal candidate, doesn't mean an internal candidate will win.
Oh, I just, no, no, no.
Dick, did you have a hand?
Yeah, well, that's why one of the important ancillary aspects of this was, we would have MASC, and if we begin the superintendents, so that they could say, "Yeah, we've seen what you're looking for, we've seen your internal candidate, man, that's good, go with that," or, you know, "There's a lot stronger people out there that we think would serve you much better." And we've been open about this all the way, so I'm comfortable saying, "We have a process, we're sticking with it, and we have safeguards," which I think are these MASC and the superintendents, so that they can kind of validate that, yes, the person that we think internally, if we go that way, is really as good or better than you're gonna get any way you, you know, go outside.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of the motion to go to 1A, as Mark put it. Opposed? Extensions? One?
Thank you. Thank you. Anything on that note, right here? I hear the Jason's perspective and post haste as quick as possible. I'll be working with Jess, Maureen, and Tracy to make this happen, and the chair.
All up to bargaining, I guess.
All up to date, everything's good, thank you. I appreciate everybody's hard work and involvement, and we have three contracts in place, and.
Preliminary?
Well, last time we had discussed eliminating the committee, we had tabled that, so.
So, we still don't wanna eliminate it, was there a motion to eliminate it?
I mean, that last time, you said.
Oh, did we?
And you said, "No."
Then you said that you weren't part of that meeting.
Yeah, remember that, that part, Michelle?
I remember we discussed it, but I didn't think we, I thought we did not both.
No, we did not vote.
Oh, okay. That was my question, once again.
Should we vote on it?
Okay.
We have to vote on it?
All right, so.
Do we want more discussion?
No, I don't think so.
Let's vote.
Let's move it on the table first.
Oh, okay.
Motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No, all in favor? Opposed? Extensions? Good, good.
And now we need to vote to remove it.
Okay. You think so, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, to abolish it. The motion is to remove it. Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, see? Okay, sitting on all in favor? Opposed? Extensions? Okay.
No wonder we got some Anna dictating in South America.
Selected facilities.
Did you have a little show?
We do, I didn't know it wasn't a plan, facilities are a business. If our technology works, we have some signatures.
Drink, and I'll be right back, and you guys can watch the show.
As we're coming up here, we did have the flooring project dropped, but I'd like to ask Claire to update the committee of where we stand with the OKM Center School Floors.
All across the floor, it's what they need to start. They did a good job. The flooring company is there now. They have till February second to complete the job, but they will probably be finished the end of next week or the first of the following week. They tiled the whole cafeteria today. So, they did the whole cafeteria today. They will be doing the road goods in the kitchen on Monday, the carpeting, they're just waiting for it. They do have a, that it's been shipped, so it's on route, so they suspect Monday or Tuesday they'll have it, and they figured that'll be done by the end of the week, or first of the following week, doing baseball.
Claire, do you know the amount of the non-abatement cost of the flooring and all that, roughly?
I don't know how, I can't remember the exact, it was thirty-one thousand, it was, one company was about ten thousand dollars higher, another one was fourteen thousand dollars higher, so fifteen million dollars. But they are a company that is owned, and the workers are the owners, so they're able to come in without that.
All right.
We're trying to get a picture before, but we had it earlier today. The principal played a role in choosing the colors and design, so it looks like a new building, and the walls are being painted now. Trish could probably give you, she got the graphics department here, painting.
Okay, so here's, here's the floor, and it's kinda difficult to see, I'm gonna go to the next one that shows more.
Nice.
So, it was pretty amazing that they got it done in one day.
Yep. At eight o'clock this morning, they were just temporarily laying down the design so they could make sure it all fit, you know, the way they thought it was going to, and then they started moving. It took a little bit of leveling, it took a little bit of leveling, more than they had thought the floor looked level, but there were a lot of little rolling, so they go work hard at leveling, and driving, and sanding, and.
What's that?
I don't know.
A hundred and five, and I think the total.
Can you tell us how many classrooms between our staff and the sheriff's staff that we've been able to get repainted?
Yes, all, one wing down with four, five, and six is presently being painted, there's probably two rooms left. They're painting the art room, the ceiling, the old computer room, and eventually, I think we have them for four weeks, so we're hoping that every classroom will have a new coat of paint. So, when we walk in, in August, it'll be like the brand new school.
Wow, nice. Dick, do you remember playing basketball when this?
I do remember playing basketball.
Now, the floor people in the higher level colony had a cafeteria, 'cause it's usually basketball hoops, and they say, "No, it's a gym." No, it's a cafeteria.
So, the town had appropriated a hundred and five thousand dollars for this entire project, and it came in under eighty thousand dollars.
The town doesn't object to late for the difference?
It objected to a lot of things along the way. I don't think that they, we'll see when I send in the bill, Doc, you're on, because once we make the final payment on this, I will put everything together and send a bill to the town to reimburse the.
Hey, please get to bed, I'll send them a dollar.
Okay, so that's all we have there.
Certainly, my thanks to Walt Nutter, who was a tremendous asset to us in this process, being a go-between, between the select board and our office, and trying very hard to keep us all on an even keel. And I think that his work with the, I know he's saying, "How did I ever get myself involved in this school committee?" Because he spent more time worrying about asbestos and floors and all kinds of other things, and now we're working on some capital project work as well. Trish, the work that Trish did when she called me is that, "Can I just ask if the sheriff's come?" I said, "Well, I don't know if you can, but if you can get them, good for you." So, you know, her efforts to kind of make sure that we got even more things done, and so that the school is really in tip-top shape when we move back in. I credit her as well for probably taking some heat about saying we're gonna stay in the range for the year, because educationally, it doesn't make any sense to uproot all those kids right now and move them back and change our bus routes and so forth in mid-year. So, thank you for taking some of that heat. I'm guessing I'll have some of it as well, but it's just not my time yet. But at any rate, good things happen, and I will, and I will tell you, the New Raintry Grade School in full operation is just a wonderful thing to see. It's busy and full of kids, and they, they're so full of kids that they have to go and do music in the town hall, they have to go to the library and do some other things during the course of the week, but it's worked out really well for us, and how it will split and, you know, make the merge for students and stuff is something that Trish will be working with, with her team. So, thank you, Walt, for what you've done, you make like you didn't do anything, but there was seven AM in the morning when we were over there wandering around kitchens, and, you know, wondering what we were gonna do with the flooring and so forth, and, you know, you did, you attended a lot of meetings, heard a lot of bad things about the superintendent and didn't repeat them, and so, that was good. So, thank you, Trish, and also Walt, for what you've done.
So, what's the estimated time that it'll be done, done?
We think it'll be done, done by Feb. one.
Feb. one?
What do you think with painting and all the painting, you think February vacation?
I would say probably the first week in March, everything that I'm asking them to paint, we'll get painted.
Okay, so.
Excellent.
Okay.
I mean, it's weird, so however you might say it, they'll be painting for summertime for the let the school will come, that they're gonna come and go, yeah, there's a bunch of things that happen.
Who else?
While we're on the subject, Claire, do you, I know that one of the selectmen is talking about getting a new range, do you know if the old range is still working, or?
No, I, I know. When we put, when we met with the Capitol, on the Capitol Plan with the Plant Facilities Committee, one of the things that we've added this year is cafeteria equipment in all the elementary schools.
Was the range part of that?
The range is a part on the Capitol Plan now.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
We don't know, because it hasn't been moved in right now, but even if it's not moved in right now, it's only partially functionable. So, if we're not gonna go down the road of consolidating and closing schools, we have to start looking at the equipment in the cafeterias, because it's as old as the buildings. And we believe the OKM range is older than the building.
We think it was a used range.
When it was put in, because the people that come out and try to fix it say, "How old is this?" So, yes, it was, and so, you asked, the town was asking for Capitol Plan items, I sent OKM theirs, Barry has theirs, and so that was on there, and then Steve LeBarre got back to me and asked me for specs, we had them already, that's how we got the quotes, so I sent him the specs. But no, we don't know what's gonna work here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so G and H here, look up there, so, policy, review, and reform.
We have such an interesting time. The first thing was the academic guide, new courses. Some years they've been this new, this year was this new, it was very different, but four years ago. Introduction to Animation. Makerspace. Now, I'm sure you, as I, wonder, what is a makerspace when it goes home and visits its mother? It's methods creative people use to solve real-world problems using various tools and technology. Is interdisciplinary merging the innovation, problem-solving, and creative creativity inherent in art, so XD design, engineering, and technology. What's an XD design? Does anybody know?
Three D.
Three D.
Three D.
Mine doesn't say three. But anyway, it's voice. Talk about where we wanna go into the future, and not memorizing fourteen ninety-two Columbus sale, the ocean blue, but man, that sounds terrific. And then theatric lighting, audio, and design. I, well, a committee has charged the administration with thinking about blended instruction. Those of you who have been around for a while may recall that as of, I think it was two thousand twelve, all of our kids had to have an online course of some sort before they graduated. When you think about, how do they learn? Well, they pull out some stupid little obnoxious thing, and they punch away, even if Mark and I wanted to talk, I wouldn't tug on his sleeve, I was a kid, I was fourteen years old, I would punch on this, and his would go, "Kaping," and he'd punch me back on his machine, instead of when we were kids, it was, you know. But anyway, when you look at where we're going, the structure we have right now is not going to work into the future. We get some more money, we get, no. You look at various industries, various businesses, endeavors, what do they do? They're more, rely more on technology, quicker, faster, automation, all that sort of thing. Public education needs to embrace this too, much more than we have, much more than we have. Now, I have always taken a great interest in this, which bollocks to some of my friends, because I don't do email and that kind of bull, so I wanna talk to someone for looking me in the eye, talk to them. But still, that's not, that's not the modern way. But blended instruction is kind of the teacher, the technology, the equipment, all working together. And it does mean that the role of the teacher is both modified and probably more demanding, because the teacher, as well as being a purveyor of instruction, is managing instruction, managing lots of kids at different levels and different ways, doing different things. And we really need, and that's one of the reasons that I'm just getting, I guess, a bit. reasons that I'm just getting, I guess, a bit annoyed about this dizzy, because when I said, "Well, how far have we gotten along? How are we doing?" Well, we have this state required thing where we have to dot our i's and cross our f's. We wanna get into this. I mean, this is important, educationally. This is looking forward. This is where we need to go. So, you know, does the district, well, we have technology rich plan. We, we need to do more on that. We need to give the students and teachers the support necessary to utilize blended, blended learning. And we need to get, establish a group to kind of look at this and look forward and look out into the future and where can we go. Now, when you think about it, we can have a much broader education. A kid wants to take course X, subject Y. We don't have course X. Well, there you go. You can, you can do something online with that. A kid wants to take Spanish four, five, six, seven. They really are, okay, they can get into that sort of thing online with technology. So that we can both have much greater breadth and much greater depth. We've heard of teachers who, and I, and I, and I'm talking about Spanish because that's a good example. The foreign languages, how often do we have teachers say, "Well, I'm teaching level three," or, you know, the third year, "But I have some fourth year kids in there too and I help them out in the back." We've heard this for years, but it's a way to get at that. And I think as a district, we really need to address this in a more profound way. I think our policy that we adopted of all kids online by two, it's fine. That, that was five years ago now.
At least.
Always, they had to do it by two thousand and twelve, which means we adopted it in two thousand and eight. That's ten years. So, we need to get after this. And I think this is the biggest major thing that I'm interested in for a policy review and reform to really push on. Because we don't just accept, "Oh, we don't have enough money," all the time. We accept that our job is to educate our children to live lives in the future world the best that we possibly can. Every person here is committed to that. Every person there is committed. There is absolutely no question. Why we come here. That's why we do this. This is why we spend the time. This is why Walter goes and looks after asbestos and tiles. This is the best, you know, but this is what we do. This is what, and I think that we really need to spend some time on that. Understanding Eureka Math. We had Paul Dubois and Tracy Lamson in here. Now, you all know the language arts at elementary. The math is the next thing and they have various groups. There's K to five, six to eight, and nine to pre-calculus. We have kids taking calculus. How many?
AP Calc.
Eight.
No, AP.
How many kids?
Twenty-five.
All right, that's great. But anyway, this is a way to try to get our math skills up the way we're, we're pulling up the language arts skills. Now, it's not quite as vigorous, I don't think. I don't think there's as much resource been put into this. Has there?
Not yet.
Not yet. But it's getting there. And I think that the teachers and the supervisors coming in and talking to us and telling us what they're doing, where they're going, that was, that was very helpful. Now, we have somewhere between a whole bunch and a whole parcel of policies. GVEC, Drug-Free Workplace, GVED, IHAMA, IJNDV, JICHDAD. These are policies that we have on the table for adoption. There isn't a single one of them that's third shattered. They're all apple pie and motherhood that the state and MASC has told us in their wisdom that we must and we will, and here's how we must and here's how we will. So, as a subcommittee, we have proposed adoption of these and they've been on the table. I make a motion that we accept these. So move.
Motion second. Any comments? All in favor, raise your hands please. Opposed?
Okay.
Abstentions?
And there's one, Dr. Allen, that needs to go on the table.
That's what I'm coming for.
Okay. You missed that important one.
I am not. ABC, tobacco products and food. What this means is those, 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 yeah, they, they, the vacant people with vacant pipe, whatever they are. But anyway, it's not.
They can't do that either.
They can't do that either. So anyway, I make a motion that we place that on the table.
Second. Comments? In favor? Hands opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Are there any questions on or comments regarding the non-table stuff that Dr. Allen spoke of?
See, I just said, since Dr. Allen had his meeting, which I think was in November, December, you know, you know, there was a study that came out of the Bureau of Labor Statistics that said that, you know, roughly, you know, those jobs that require only a high school education, thirty percent of them are gonna be automated or eliminated by twenty thirty. Now, twenty thirty, in, in, in our world, seems like a long way away. Twenty thirty for a kid who's in eighth grade really ain't that far away. So, I mean, kids think that, "Ah, always working McDonald's." You know, well, there's gonna be a robot serving you your burger at McDonald's by twenty thirty. There's gonna be one person running the joint. So, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, we have to, like, think seriously about the automation piece. And in science and technology and math, I mean, you have these, you know, students are solid base stuff. To be able to do something out there rather than be automated. I mean, they talk about just giving somebody a stipend to stay home in twenty thirty. Because we won't be able to, we won't be able to have a job for them, right? The way people are gonna be working are people with the skills to actually do. So it's, it's something that really, you know, as, as Dr. Allen says, we need to take very seriously. And also a little bit maybe in the automation budget, you know, the technology budget, you know, like, maybe we oughta have better than a two for one, uh, two students to one PC ratio on the budget going forward.
We read that confab at the Cape. It's a tendance, a thing. So they, I forget the gentleman's being there.
Bill Daggett.
And so he put on a presentation for an hour that the entire world came to see. And we're dead around, you gotta see this guy. So he's showing, um, car, a, a car being put together. And he said, "Five years ago, it took X amount of people, X amount of personnel, et cetera. You watched it on the screen and the robot was taking these parts, putting it together." He said, "They, they do it now in two hours." What, took two days and X amount of people. The one that blew me away is they had a robot building a cement wall and you're, and he's got it out on video and you're watching his arm go back and forth laying the perfect amount of cement, coming back, laying the next perfect amount. And he said, "Once again, two laborers, you know, X amount of, the robot did it in like two hours." I mean, a, a full wall for a basement, you know, and, and it's like, and he, he essentially said the same thing. He broke it down. But he says, "Where we're missing," he says, he said, "Looking at the stuff, right now, the vocational schools are the ones that are missing the boat. Because they're teaching stuff that maybe you can step out and do tomorrow, but five years from now, those kids won't be, will be adults now, won't be able to do almost any of that because so much of it is gonna be automation. So much of it's gonna be artificial intelligence." And he said, "That's where we're falling down." He said, "The vocational schools, all this money we pump into them," he said, "In ten years, they may be obsolete the way they're working right now." I mean, it was a, it was a unbelievable presentation.
That's why the thinking, the problem solving, the use of tech, all those sorts of things is where we need to go, rather than Dottie and I crossing a T about how many of this or that for a desert.
And then I just want to comment about the nanotechnology, where the nanotechnology and the healthcare is going. So aside from what you're talking about jobs that could be obsolete without people that just a high school, not a high school diploma, you also have technological skills. You don't have to have a four-year or a six-year degree. You could have a certificate program for fixing the robots as well as other automated pieces. So that's where I, I agree that we have to upgrade our teaching and delivery of instruction. Yes, the chalk and the board works, but also we need to have other skills to help folks function and be able to maintain a livelihood and to be part of a society that's gonna function well. Because there is, the automation is there. And it was scary to swat. They said it took a year, year and a half for like a project team to work. Can you be down to three months, two months for a project team and have these pieces, cars coming out? That's out, that's unbelievable.
And he was talking, and he was talking engineers too. He wasn't just saying, you know, we'll call it workers. He said, "Six engineers used to take to do the job, now one en."
One engineer.
One engineer. So there were five engineers that lost their jobs.
Yeah, and something that we talked about, and I think is worth mentioning to the full committee, is we learned something when we instituted IB. By the time we were in year four, five or six, it was rolling along quite nicely. It was valued highly. Our implementation was perceived as a bit arbitrary and didn't involve the teachers as much. That's why I made a point of saying, "We need to include teachers in this. We need to think very carefully about how we do it. We need to be very strategic. Maybe we even start with a, what are they called, magnet school of some sort, in the high school, where we have a group of teachers and a group of kids as a way of getting going and getting started. Maybe a way to attract other, other teachers and other kids from other towns." And I think there's a lot of good things that we can do if we get out in front of this, which clearly we can do and clearly others are not.
Another point on your, on your blended learning, Dick, is that at Mark's meeting today, and it just kind of caught me by surprise. I guess I never thought about it this way, but we were discussing kids working in the school on their computers, et cetera, because that's what we're looking to do. And then in the surveys, as she was reporting out, she reflected that, that some kids, depending on the town and maybe even the parts of other towns, when they go home, they can't do the work because they don't have the broadband or the connections, et cetera. So when you're looking at this, I mean, the school, you know, in my brain, I think when we have all our technology meetings, et cetera, I'm always thinking, geez, the school's behind, we're behind, we need more money in technology. Whereas it's kind of flipped around. It's like, the kids are coming to school and able to do some stuff with their teachers and themselves. But then when they go home, depending on where you're living, you can't do it because you can't get that connection. And I'm wondering if, and we said this at the meeting, I don't know the acronym of, say, your group or whatever the name of it is now.
Oh, that's, that's coming.
Post-colon or whatever it is. And I'm wondering, when they're looking at the big picture of what the towns can do and not just the Quabon region, but maybe other towns, I'm wondering if this is something they should, yeah, I don't know what the price would be, et cetera, but to get all the towns in our region on board, so all, anybody at home, whether it's adults or kids, can have those connections so they can do that kind of stuff. If we're gonna teach it in schools or utilize it in schools, I don't, I don't say what good is it, but, but it sure hurts. Then when the kid goes home and he can't do this stuff at home, or she can't do this stuff at home. So I don't know if the.
It is. It is. And I think that's part of it. Do you want me to segue in now or?
Um, if Dick is done.
I'm done.
Sure, segue in.
Okay. We, I haven't really reported out since November. We had a, we had a, a meeting in December and we had a meeting in, in last week. And just for an update, the, the December meeting was where the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission really kind of took, they, they, they came in and they told us what they were going to do, what they had planned to do. And one of the first things we did was, uh, we changed the name. It is no longer the Closing Consolidating Task Force. It is now the Quabon Educational and Municipal Partnership, which goes to exactly what Lee was just talking about in terms of the refocus. Uh, there's a website that you can access that does, is gonna do a whole lot better job of explaining what this is all about than, than I can do. But the website is, I don't, I don't, haven't said it, but I guess it's Q, Q U, lowercase, Q U, Q E M P dot info forward slash. And there's a, a four-page website and it's, part of it is still under construction and it's being constructed by the people at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And, um, one of the first tasks that they did was they, uh, they, they, they distributed a survey amongst town officials, town employees, school committee members. I don't know if anybody, you, you know, you took it. And they came back last, last week, last Wednesday night, and they reported back on it. And I was gonna ask Sheila to show us the PowerPoint, but, from last week, but I thought we'd, we'd be here for a while. So I'm, I'm gonna, but what they did was they, they took, they took community issues, they took school issues, they asked people for feedback on it. And I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights because it's on the website and you can, you can see it there. One of the, the two biggest concerns that the municipal officials had was that they wanted to ensure that the budget process was transparent. And Cheryl and I talked a little about that. And, and, and Mark, I, I'm not sure if that's code for they want lower assessments. That was my gut reaction. Because I, I watched the, the budget process a couple ways these past couple years. And I thought it was pretty transparent, except there was no one here to see the transparency. You know, there was, there was plenty, there was plenty of chairs, no people, so.
Tree falls in the forest.
That's right. It was transparent to whatever, whatever was the leaves of the trees, but no, nobody else.
And everything's on our website.
You know, everything's on the website. So, and the second concern, and I thought this was a, a really good one, was they, they encouraged the continue, they can, the continuing engagement of the communities and/or the, the district in reaching out to other school districts to improve efficiencies. One of the remarkable ones, I thought, was that both New Braintree, the, the respondents in New Braintree and OCAM supported giving the school committee the authority to close schools, uh, which I, I, I thought that was remarkable. Um.
Room left by now.
Yes, the respondents. And, and Sheila and I, Sheila can fill you in about the, the, uh, yes. But Sheila can tell you about the, the numbers because some of, yeah, it was, it was, the, it was more.
Square Hendra.
It was.
One more.
And Lucy, and Lucy.
No, no, from the Braintree.
But, uh, one of the best things that you could go to besides the website, and, and I can make this a lot briefer, uh, in December, there was an article in the Bar, the Gardner News, and it's an excellent summary. And it, it does a far better job than I could in summarizing where we are and where we're going. Next week, there's going to be meetings in every town. The, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is conducting meetings in every town. There's gonna be two sessions in each town one day, I think, except OCAM that requested only one session. But they're going to talk about its, um, uh, two, two, two focus groups. The afternoon session is going to be about shared services, and I think that's gonna probably involve mostly municipal employee, municipal officials. And the evening is about economic development. And part of the, the things that they're looking for, Lee, is exactly what you were talking about. What, what are the components of a community that would make it attractive for, of, of businesses to, to come and people to come to participate in those businesses? And when, when you don't have broadband, like New Braintree, or you have limited broadband in your area, you're gonna limit, you're gonna limit, uh, uh, the opportunities for businesses to really take hold.
What's the date on the ones that you have?
I do. I can bring them up.
Do you have it?
Tuesday, sixteen.
It's.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Do I have it?
They were all over these pages. I have mine at home.
Those are in Barry on the sixteen.
Yeah, Libby, no, there should be just one day.
Yeah, there are.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you, Debbie. January sixteenth is New Braintree.
Sixteen, sorry.
And it's.
That's Tuesday.
Yeah, and the meeting is, the first meeting is three thirty to five thirty. The second meeting is six to eight.
And then, and then the seventeenth, that's New Braintree's on the sixteenth.
Yeah, OCAM is the seventeenth. And there's one meeting, six to eight. January twenty-second is Hardwick. Uh, the afternoon session is three thirty to five thirty. The evening session is six forty-five to eight. Um, January twenty-third is Barry. Three thirty to five thirty and six to eight. And, um, January twenty-fourth is Hubbardston. Three thirty to five thirty, six to eight. Three-thirty to five-thirty, six to eight. And if the other members that were there, I got the impression that this was, this was to a focus group of, for municipal leaders? Is that what it says?
Well, the, the first meeting is going to be more geared towards that. That is the agenda for that. And then the later one.
They did?
Yeah.
And it said for the only ones, town officials and employees.
That's who they're, anyone is welcome to attend, but that's who they're anticipating. And the agenda is kind of geared towards those conversations.
Yeah.
And the second, the later one is more the building reuse or a little of the economic and I forget what else. I don't look at it as last. Regional services.
Regional, regional procurement, regional service, economic development. They're, they're going to have some more community meetings in March. They're going to develop their data. And then they're going to come back in May. They're going to facilitate a five, public meetings in March. Okay, so in January, there's, they're going to draft and deploy the public survey.
I think that might be later now after these meetings.
That was after the meeting. February, continue to survey and summarize. March, public meetings in each town. April, to digest feedback from public meetings and develop draft recommendations. And May to facilitate a five-town regional meeting to present draft recommendations and solicit feedback. And then in June, a draft summary, but we extended that, I think.
We extended it from May thirtieth to June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. So what, what's really encouraging is when, when Janet Pierce and her group comes, there's like four or five of them, and they've all got, they've all got their little assignments. And sometimes I get caught in their weeds, but they're very, they're very, very focused on what they're doing. And I think the fact that it's a, a, a group that understands, that talks our language, that understands our environment, that understands the challenges of a rural school district in a rural, five rural communities, it's been very beneficial to have them come. And I think.
And they've also worked with other communities around that we can either look at models of things they've done or things that may, we may be able to help each other or, so you can definitely, the local.
Yeah.
Having them local and involved in this area, I think, is huge.
And to go back to your broadband, I was at the trustees meeting last night at the library and our, the, the budget item for the internet this year is going to go from six hundred dollars a year to seven thousand. And it's, and it is done in the direction of the town administrator because there's going to be broadband in, in the library for people to access. And so, you know, it's, it's out there now. And when you think about little, little Henry Woods Library with a, that kind of capacity, there's, you know, you're bringing that, the infrastructure of that building into the twenty-first century. And, and the rest of the common needs it as well if they're going to provide, you know, sustain businesses there.
Well, you know, just, I mean, when people talk business, I mean, I guess a lot of people are still thinking of, you know, the factories, you know, sort of in that frame. But if you're looking at the millennials or the Z generation, I guess it's the next one after that, whatever, whatever they market by, a lot of these kids, but they're still kids to me, I mean, they're, they're like entrepreneurial, they're doing their own thing. Two years ago, just anecdotally, I spoke with somebody and administrator in Princeton, Princeton. And he said, you know, we've had a couple people, I mean, Princeton's kind of, you know, people want to live there. He said, we've had a couple people who wanted to move in, both of them had like their own, their own personal business, they, but they needed computer, they needed, and Princeton couldn't operate. He said, we couldn't give them the power that they needed. They never moved into town. And he said, so it looks like we're losing people because we just can't give them what, what they, they can get maybe in the cities or, or east of, of four ninety-five. And everybody, all these towns, all of our towns complain, gee, we can't get businesses in, you know, so much of this land goes for the Quavon area and it's protected, et cetera. Well, if the business of the future are individuals doing their own thing, then it just makes sense to me to get broadband or whatever, even if, you know, if your taxes might go up for whatever reason, but if you're going to bring these people in to move in who are going to have hopefully children, et cetera. I mean, to me, that's the way to look. You're not going to bring businesses in, you know, unless the Gateses want to give us a lot of money and say, sure, open this up or open that up, and here's fifty people, here's sixty people there. It's going to be the individuals that come into our towns and say, yeah, I want to move here because I can make up my own little, you know, study and I could work out of here.
And that's what the survey kind of showed, what type of businesses were.
Prominent, yeah.
Were prominent, yeah. It was, it was more agricultural and the small business that, in, I mean, the survey wasn't a huge group of people and there's going to be other surveys. And they decided to post, not post this on the website so that it doesn't skew other ones and, you know, so the public won't think, oh, well, they already made up their mind or, you know, so it'll be impartial still. But that's, that was, it was the mom and pop kind of stores that, and tourism, attracting tourism to a lot of our open spaces and that kind.
Two more brew pubs.
And microbreweries.
And microbreweries. Cannabis and tattoo parlors and pawn shops were not desired in this area.
So you'll have to go to Worcester for your tattoo. But your, your, the best thing you could do is read, this really shows you where we've been the past couple of months. This article was excellent in terms of summary. And we will be back, our next meeting is January thirty-first, which is a Wednesday. And the C, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission will be reporting back on what they've got and where they go from here. So I'm, I'm very encouraged. Anybody else that was there have anything to say?
Sorry, I didn't mean to keep jumping.
No, it's not. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Craigie Specials?
Nope.
Okay, and technology?
Me, nothing.
Oh, nothing, okay. Um, unfinished business, do we have any?
Nothing.
Okay, public comment? Nothing online, nobody? Okay, good. Still committed concern?
Yeah, three things. We talked about the specials a few years ago. I had a good friend left Monday this week to go down to Austin because her daughter who learned art with Cheryl Adams, this is Sasha Witro, has a gallery which is successful enough that she's doing interior art in six-story business buildings and is creating art for and going around the country to set these things up. Cheryl has done it on state, we, we know this. But her comment relayed through her mother, who was my friend who was going down there, was, you didn't just teach art, but she taught the business of art. What you do, how you think, what your skills are, what the requirements are, and that sort of thing, which I found to be very interesting. Went to the N J R O T C inspection. How many, both of us were there. Yeah, there were, there were a bunch of us that were there. Very well done, very well done. We got distinguished homeowners, top of the thing, add another banner to the top of the fifteen others already on the, on the flagpole and all. One thing that struck me is the social and civic grace and skills that they teach. This is the, the thing that they passed out. And in it, I, I want to read this, do you mind?
Go ahead.
"The naval officer," this is by John Paul Jones. "It's by no means enough that an officer of the navy should be a capable mariner." He must be that, of course, but also a good deal more. "He should be as well a gentleman of liberal education, refined manners, punctilious courtesy, and the nicest sense of personal honor. He should be the soul of tact, patience, justice, firmness, and charity. No meritorious act of a subordinate should escape his attention or be left to pass without its reward, even if the reward is only a word of approval. Conversely, he should not be blind to a single fault of any subordinate, though at the same time he should be quick and unfailing to distinguish error from malice. Thoughtlessness from incompetence and well-meaning shortcomings from heedless or stupid blunder. In one word, every commander should keep constantly before him the great truth, that to be well-abide he must be perfectly esteemed." Now, that's a, John, that was a couple hundred years ago. But what a wonderful ideal to hold up to young men and women about how they should go through their life, what they should be as leaders and as managers of people and that sort of thing. Finally, alumni, I know Sue was there. What a wonderful thing that was. People from all of these generations of Quavon, music, many of them music educators, again, they, you read the story in your paper today, and wasn't that a nice story about the kids and how they got started here and then encouraged them and they became professional music educators? I don't think any of them are professional musicians, they're music educators, I think. There's nobody.
Not for a living. Many of them play with professional groups.
Of course, but they're music educators, really. But again, that comes out of our school and our school district and what we have done and the kind of programs that we have supported and kept here. It enriches all of us. It provides livings for some of us, but it's what a gracious, appropriate, liberal community should aspire to. And good for us, all of us, I think, in what was done.
So I will add one more to your list.
Good.
At the fiftieth anniversary of the Barry High School team that won whatever championship it was in Western Mass.
Tri-state tournament.
Tri-state tournament.
In Turner's Falls, I remember it well.
They were on one of our halftime basketball games. The Dr. Allen was one of the honorees. I believe your, your father-in-law was one of the honorees.
He was.
And.
Freddie Grumalski, he didn't attend, was an honorary.
Oh, Grumalski wasn't there? Okay.
Mike Stine.
And, and to show you what, you know, what some jocks, what's really important to them when I was speaking with your father-in-law, I think I told you a while ago, he mentioned that, but he also mentioned that, you know, two years after that, we lost to Hardwick.
Yes.
He still, he still fought it the hell out of me, you know. He didn't talk about, you know, he talked about losing to Hardwick. We never should have lost to Hardwick that year.
But not.
So.
That was the rivalry.
Yep, so those things run deep. But I think that was a nice thing to, to honor. I guess it was, what, seven or eight, at least seven.
Yes.
Were you not ill for that day? Because you were supposed to.
I was in.
Good.
She was.
Anybody else? The only thing I'd like to say is I want to thank everybody who attended the, the joint at Chusset Quavon. We had a lot of school committee members there. We had a lot of, a number, probably more townspeople, or by townspeople, I mean, fincoms and select people that I've ever seen at, at any one meeting. I thought the presentation was good and the questions were good and I thought that was a, a very nice thing on our part. I'm just blown away that I'm thinking this was, what, December second? Seems like it was five months ago.
It does.
I mean, really, it does. And when you, when we had, when I, you said we had that meeting on your, on your.
Thirteenth.
December thirteenth. It wasn't even a month ago and it seems like ages ago. So maybe time doesn't fly too quickly. But anyway, thank you all for attending. I think it was, you know, very nice of us, so many school committee members. Anybody else? All right, new business, we'll be good to go. I don't think we need an executive session, so I will retain.
Second.
All right.
It's awesome.